Time is five oh one and I'd like to call the school board to move to order. Lisa, could we please have a roll call?
Director Satter?
Yeah.
Director Rice?
Here.
Director Cardisina?
Here.
Director Lappi?
Here.
Director Casey?
Here.
Board Chair Rama?
Here.
And Superintendent Allen?
Here.
Okay, meeting's called for order. We have four of them. Item number two is public comment from anybody in the audience, seeing none. Item three is recognition of any guests or visitors who wish to address the board, seeing none. Item four is a motion to approve the agenda. We have a couple of additions to the agenda. Under business. Item H is a motion to approve the provider agreement between Chisholm and Indian School District Number 695 and Recover Health of Minnesota doing business as Albiana Healthcare for healthcare services between June 8th, 2022 and June 30th, 2023. And item I, motion to approve payment to Johnson Controls in the amount of $6,971 for the purchase and installation of an air dryer. Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion by Jackie.
Second.
Supported by Shelley. Any comments or questions on the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And five reports that I made is the superintendent's report. Adrian?
I just wanted to say, my first graduation I attended here was a success and we had forty-five students graduate and it was a fun night and I was glad I was able to participate in it. It went really well. We started summer school on June 6th. We had just under three dozen students enrolled in our credit recovery program and I'm glad to see a lot of students showed up and participated. And I went down to the van and they kicked off Safety Town also on June 6th. So we had the police officers there and the cars there and the kiddos there and that was also neat to see. And just a heads up that we're continuing to be the transportation hub for summer camps in the area and we have about a handful of our students that have been attending those and it's in schools throughout our region. Couple of thank yous. Chris Anjun and the Chisholm Community Education generous donations. They brought in school supplies, clothings, hygiene items for all of our schools and this is the second truckload of donations this year. And we had an anonymous donor for the ice cream truck that was here on our last week of school so all students in this building could have ice cream. So it was very nice.
Any questions for Adrian? Thank you. Okay, item six is the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Motion by Cindy.
Support.
Supported by Mark. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay. In personnel, item A, a motion to approve the resolution regarding facilities and grounds slash operations manager position. I'm not going to read the whole resolution. Adrian, you want to comment?
Do you have any questions?
Questions on it?
I should go to superintendent if the resolution gets a little wordy.
That's why I'm not reading.
That's okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve that resolution regarding the position.
Aye.
Motion by Jackie, your support.
Support.
Supported by Shelley. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is a motion to approve the facilities and grounds slash operations manager job description as amended. Removing the position from the asked reunion to an at-will position. Replace the title from coordinator to manager. Do we have a motion?
It's coming.
It's by Shelley and the chair will support. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, just I guess a quick question. The added language does classify or will it classify as a non-bargaining unit position?
Correct.
And this language has been presented to the applicant?
Yes. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the facilities and grounds operations manager job description as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, a motion to approve the non-renewal for the following paraprofessionals due to reductions for 2022 school year caused evaluation, open enrollment, lesson or reduced service minutes and enrollment decrease, et cetera. Effective June 2nd, 2022. And those names are Gina Sleen, Adam Norrie, and Katrina Hansen. Do we have a motion?
It's coming.
Motion by Jackie, your support?
Support for discussion purposes.
Okay, support by Mark. Go ahead, Mark.
Just a wording I hear, Mr. Superintendent. Enrollment decrease on item C is some wording that we're using for the reduction and what we're telling everybody else is that our enrollment is staying the same?
So our paraprofessionals are for special education support and so it should have probably read reduction in minutes of support or worded a little different. That advice comes to us from the NLC, who is our director of special education.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the non-renewal of the three paraprofessionals listed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to business. Item A, a motion to approve the letter of agreement between Indian School District Number 695 and U T C Sequin Infinity Tech from July 2022 through June 2023. Do we have a motion? Motion by Mark. Support? Supported by Cindy. Any comments or questions?
I can just give a brief description so I understand what it is. It's a virtual professional development platform for teachers to get continually education units. And so there's different checkboxes you need for your teacher license and if, say, you needed a suicide prevention course, you could find it there and get that box checked based on your PD. And that amount in the contract, it's a statewide contract so that's what you pay for people.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the letter of agreement between ISP 695 and U T C Sequin Infinity Tech. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, a motion to approve the proposal from Smart Lab HQ in the amount of $3,6798 for Grids 4 through 6 S T D M program. Do we have a motion?
It's coming.
Motion is by Shelley. Is there a support?
Support.
Support by Danielle. Comments or questions?
Just for discussion, Chair, I did ask Superintendent Norman just kind of about, you know, if this was something that we had budgeted and it is something that we have money from, from the funds and things of nature. So I was just curious as to, you know, what, I love it but just, you know, what, you know, what are we going to, you know, be able to, how are we going to pay for it? So it looks very, it looks very good. So I was satisfied knowing that we have, we have money for to get this critical update of the computers.
So it'll come out of our ESTER funds? It'll be a July 1 ESTER fund purchase because we rolled last year's to next year's.
Okay.
So will this be implemented this year?
It's about a twelve-week lag in ordering it and then there's some PD needed on the upfront side of it. That's if all channels go well. And when we vetted it, we vetted it for esports as well since we're close proximity to the high school and everything looks good on both those fronts. And he wanted to come and present in person, but he's quarantined. So he apologizes that he's not able to be here but he did want to come up and put a face to it as well.
Are you still going to do a bake sale for the chairs then?
I tried to pull those out and I did get two bids and by the time you get delivery and assembly and the weeks out, the money wasn't any different unless we really went lower end and I was fine with them being an all-in-one purchase. We did and I actually had Joe look into posting on a separate server. I had him look at a few, vet a few different things and we couldn't beat their price. And with theirs, it comes with content and curriculum for STEM where when you try to find other vendors for this, it's a kind of do-it-yourself model and we're not there yet.
Great for our district.
Fabulous.
Okay, any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the proposal from Smart Lab HQ for Grids 4 through 6 STEM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C.
Lucy Jensen is here tonight. We should recognize this will be her baby.
Hi.
So she's very happy to see that we're moving through this.
Anyway, thank you. Item C is a motion to approve payment to Power School in the amount of $5,516.50 to enrollment and e-collect services from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Coming.
Motion by Jackie, there's support?
Support.
Support by Danielle. Comments or questions? And this is just our annual.
Our school information system, that's our annual update.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve payment to Power School. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is a motion to approve group health insurance renewal with the Northeast Service Cooperative effective September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023 as presented. So, and this is by Mark. You have a second?
Okay, Cindy, go. That's fine.
Cindy.
Cindy. Second.
Any comments or questions? I know what a good job these people do and they're keeping our rates down. They're doing the best they can to keep it and keep it as inexpensive as possible. What's the fact that they're in Mount Niang? If you want to drive over there, you can talk to them but you're not going to be able to talk to anybody in a big company. So it's a lot of benefit to staying with the co-op and I appreciate the staff standing with it. I really do, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I might add.
Yeah.
And anytime school board or teachers want, we can call them and they'll come over and they'll give a presentation and
Absolutely.
they'll explain things and always very personal and available.
Absolutely.
And we do work very hard to continue to try to get those discounts.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I'm very happy with what they've done, seriously. And now this is a whole statewide consortium, so this is a big deal. So, okay. A motion and a second to approve the group health insurance renewal with the Northeast Service Co-op. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item E, a motion to approve the expenditure of $3.70 per employee for cybersecurity training videos, reports, assessments, and phishing simulations for a three-year commitment beginning June 15th, 2022. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second by Jackie. Motion is by Danielle, support by Jackie. Any comments or questions?
This was through Arc.
Yeah.
They brought in a couple providers to talk about cybersecurity. Our insurance provider Valor is in this camp that we need to take some steps. After August 1st, we're going to have to start looking at a two-point or two-part authentication and so this will help provide staff some training and some other tools when it comes to cyber awareness and cybersecurity.
So this, this is a blanket coverage and it's not pay as we use it?
It's a three-year commitment at those prices.
Anything else? Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the expenditure of $3.70 per employee for cybersecurity training. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is a motion to approve the resolution to accept donations and is a resolution accepting $25 donation from Michael and Sue Vidmar in memory of Robert Schock. Do we have a motion?
It's coming.
Motion by Jackie.
Support.
Supported by Shelley. Any comments or questions? Also, we thank anybody, people for donations and Bob Schock was a teacher in this district for many, many years and a hockey coach too, so. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. You know what, Chair, I just realized that's a resolution and on the very first one too, we forgot to take a look.
Oh, yeah.
I just thought about that. Exactly, but yeah. We can finish this one first and then we can go back to anything.
My bad ribs. Okay. Let us, let's do this one first. Go ahead, Lisa. Roll call, please.
Director Satter?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Cardisina?
Yes.
Director Lappi?
Yes.
Director Casey?
Yes.
Board Chair Rama?
Yes. Okay. Okay, so the first resolution is in personnel under A is a motion to approve the resolution regarding facilities and grounds operations manager position. Roll call, please.
Director Satter?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Cardisina?
Yes.
Director Lappi?
Yes.
Director Casey?
Yes.
Board Chair Rama?
Yes.
I have a question on this $600 donation from, for the elementary kids. We don't have to do a resolution for that.
It was anonymous that I was told by somebody, an adult walked up and said, make sure all these kids in this line don't pay. Very nice gesture.
Very nice. It's kind of a book that we do the ice cream. Yeah.
We made a lot of kids happy.
Okay. Now the second one.
We really did benefit. I just sent my gift and yeah, but it's very, very nice.
Gee.
That's not a resolution.
No, it's not.
You're okay.
I'm good.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay.
You're on G.
I'm on G.
Yep. Last one.
Thank you, Jackie.
Welcome. Sorry.
Item G. First reading of policy 501.1. Chism School's extracurricular activities, rules, and regulations. Do we have a motion?
If it's a first reading, are we approving it? Because I, I think there's some changes that need to be made, but so.
Yeah. Well, no, it's just the first reading.
Reading. Two readings?
Two readings.
So I guess if you make a motion to start discussion, because I do have some.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so I mean, I'll make a motion if you guys do have to for the first reading.
Should.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion then.
It's more here. Mark supports.
And I just, when I'm reading this policy, I notice that it's, it's specific to alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, but it doesn't list out vapes, vape pens, vape juice, anything specific. And so I think obviously another tobacco, we, we, we would use that as the same. I think there is a vaping policy.
So I'm looking at the reading.
Yeah, I'm going to look that up. So I think we use those definitions and pull it in. But I think this one's just outdated for that stuff. We want to speak that similarly. We don't want to, I don't want to overlook the specifics, I guess. Someone will challenge that. Yep. I think. Anyway, that was my comment on the first reading.
Okay.
Policy committee wants to maybe pull in, you know, pull in that definition and update that.
Yes, Mark, my understanding is that you're going to be going through all these policies?
Yep.
For the policy committee. Will this policy be revisited? Because I.
I think this policy was pulled off. I'm pretty sure.
Because I'll, I'll just make one comment. You know, and we're all, we're all here for the safety of the kids and especially, you know, consumption and use of illegal substances. But I guess I have some concerns about the first offense, six weeks of the season. Grand Rapids is two weeks, Hitting is three weeks. In our shortened seasons, you know, like fall and the spring, six weeks probably not that athlete, student athlete, hot of the whole sport for years. So if the policy, if the policy committee would reconsider that or table to get that.
I think it makes sense to look at local districts and see what they have. I mean, this is, this, this, these date back to as long as I was in high school. We can just, it's been that.
Yeah.
And so other, you know, school districts are doing something, you know, different that, you know, I remember probably that either. My biggest concern is just not having, you know, everything kind of laid out for people so that if, if a coach is trying to enforce something, they don't get questioned on, well, it says tobacco here. Not, not vape juice or whatever, so.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just making it specific. Yeah, I have, I have no objection to looking at something like that either if the policy committee wants to see what's, what schools. This looks like it hasn't been updated since 14. I don't. Maybe do 2014, so.
Yeah.
Oh, then this one probably hasn't been pulled off. But that's, yeah, like our plan is to go through all of them, you know.
I can look at the most updated ones.
I was saying, we want to use, use student athletes to another school district.
Well, if, if, if I'm different and everything, I guess. Yeah, I, I.
You know, I, and please believe me, I'm not condoning.
Yeah, no, no. But I don't, I don't always, I'm not always a big fan of just following the other districts just because that's what they do. I think Hitting also has, you know, what is it? For grade point average, I think it's.
One point. One point.
Yeah, and ours is two point.
Two point.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't always like to just follow, but definitely we have to look into it. I have, yeah.
Okay.
All right. The policy committee will sort of lead you and discuss.
And remind me.
And we'll remind them, yeah, we'll get you on the docket. No, actually, you put us all on the docket and then you didn't come.
I did. It's like, I don't need to get this guy to my agent.
Okay. First reading? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Good discussion. Item H is a motion to approve the provider agreement between Chisholm and Indian School District Number 695 and Recover Health of Minnesota doing business as Albiana Healthcare for healthcare services effective June 8th, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Do we have a motion?
It's coming.
Motion is by Jackie. Is there a support?
Support.
Support by Shelley. Comments or questions?
This is our current provider that provides our nurses and our students. There is a salary adjustment of $3 per hour indicated in the contract.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item I is a motion to approve payment to Johnson Controls in the amount of $6,971 for recurchest and installation of an air dryer. Do we have a motion?
It's coming.
Motion by Jackie. Support?
Support.
Supported by Cindy. Comments or questions?
So it's not an air dryer per se. It's something that has to do with the electronics to get the moisture away from the electronics that we don't have and need so we don't have some of the similar problems that we had this past year. That's about as best as I can describe it from someone of the Boiler's license.
If it has to be the boiler being examined.
It's the boilers, right?
Okay. All right, may I have a motion and a second to approve the payment to Johnson Controls? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item H is discussion. Cindy, would you like to, what do you think about this attendance plan?
Yeah, this is for the, we went over the attendance policy. First of all, Mark came in, Mark Morrison came in to talk to us and we squashed the whole hat thing. We're just leaving the policy to stay. Then we talked about the attendance plan and we got the policy all written out and then we had talked to Mark a while back about doing procedures instead of an actual. I mean, the policy is there, but the procedures will be followed that will go into the student handbook. And Robbie Albert is the one who made this up and I talked to quite a few people and they are very happy with how this, these procedures are for attendance, so we're just going to add this to our policy. And we changed some wording because it had policy in here, but this is not a policy, it's a procedure.
So, so just to add on to that, these different tiers have to do with our multi-tiered system of support. So working with our NLC, they also vetted this. Non-policy.
This non-policy? This procedure?
This procedure. And so we ran it by them and also the folks at Check and Connect so that we were in line with what everyone's doing. So we're starting to have language and do things across the board that are similar.
Because it's really hard to, and we're going to try with our policies to get the policies from the MSBA and stick with their policies and if something has to be a little bit different for our district, then we'll add it as a procedure. Because it's, it's just too hard to change the policies when we can just make it a procedure as our, for our district. But it's still following the policy. So, but we're going to, Lisa is going to help us and we're going to start going through number one hundreds. We're going to go first through the hundreds and just copy them all from MSBA and figure out which ones are national. Try to just stay right in line because they have people that do that. And we, we don't. But they, you know, that's, they're pretty on top of that, so I think that will be that sort of.
Sending notices of, here's an update or you don't need to approve this one or you should look at this one, so I think that's a great plan.
And the benefit of a procedure is that it's way more detailed for like actual implementation for the, for the administration, the principals of teachers to follow when a policy is written more generically so that it doesn't have to change exactly all the time. So I mean, I think that.
So for the student handbook, I think it's real important to put procedures so, you know, people can actually just look at them and really, you can follow them so much easier. So, but that's what, that is our plan, so.
I'd like to comment our website with the update. You can type in policy 50 and it pulls up. It's a scrolling policies. So that's great.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll get it all and maybe we'll be, you know. Yeah, so we'll, we'll get it all, and maybe we'll be, you know, those big books that we, we have will not be quite so important.
Those would be a little condensed.
So, but yes, I mean, less.
Clarice and Mark, cause she was very good at that policy.
And a lot of them, again, they, they do, and it's just good to stick with those policies, cause they do send you statutory updates when there's any kind of changes in the. And I do believe Clarice was trying to do that as we're going, so that's, we're just gonna continue that process. Continue that process, but then for things that need to be implemented day in and day out, like attendance, I have a procedure. Yeah, try to make it a little bit simpler. I think that makes no sense. Maybe they'll follow, yeah. Yeah, but you'll follow the policy. So anyway, that's, that's what we're doing.
Very good, thank you so much. Um, I just have a little bit of something, I, I just wanted to tell everybody that the Northeast Service Co-op has hired Aubrey Hoover.
Oh, that one who always says this.
Yeah.
And she is gonna be working under Tara Lindstrom. And it has a lot to do with mental health and situations like that, so the co-op is stepping up. And Aubrey is brilliant, she's just fabulous, so she started on, uh, June 1st. And the county's gonna miss her, but the co-op is really, really gonna get something there, so there'll be more coming out about this as we go, and, and as I attend those meetings, I will let us know, let us know what's going on there, and what they're gonna do for our district on top of everything else.
I was wondering why you weren't at the bottom of that last email.
I read it, yeah, I read it from the last email. Yeah.
Okay, so, I, I need the other, uh, discussion members from the members.
Um, is this the time where I should talk about the, um, all-class reunion parade?
Sure.
Are we gonna like try to
Yeah.
get some people together and do, do like a flog or, I mean, I don't know how to go about it, do I just like talk to some people and see if they, cause I'm already committed to one, but, I mean, I think we should do something, we'll have to get maybe some.
You got a box of pencils now that say Chisholm Blue Streets?
Well, why?
Can we legally have a sign that says, oh, yes, like, just a, so literally get it out to people?
Like, yeah, that's what I wanna tell.
Something like that, yeah.
We wanna mention to, you know, uh, Ms. Jensen about that, can we do something like, I know Tara Anderson was telling me about, they had little megaphones one year that they gave out.
Yeah.
And they, we could just have them say yes, you know, on them. But we wouldn't have to be, you know, but I would wanna clear it, of course, with, you know, whoever to.
I think it's a great idea.
But I think it would be a good idea, I mean, people at the parade love stuff, so.
Well, maybe some other task force, people will be able, I know they can, they can do more of that than, than we, you know, than we can, but I'm not exactly sure.
Right. Yeah, then we. Yeah, so maybe we can.
I don't remember.
That's like that, I'm hoping maybe we can have, like, when our next meeting with Ms. Jensen, a little megaphone, we do some dogs, like, really.
Yeah, they're really.
I know there's some, some things that we're not supposed to do with, in regards to the referendums, I don't wanna be like on Facebook and then be getting all that, or, you know, or do something wrong. Maybe we can.
So the update I had today was they are almost done with a survey that's gonna go out to the entire community. Uh, it's a comprehensive survey to get feedback, and then they have a flyer that is in the printing process right now that I just approved on Friday. Um, that'll be coming out shortly.
Okay.
Or is the, is?
And that's gonna, how we need to.
Usually the band goes down, so we provide the band. I know the last couple of all-class classes, the band is played. I mean, I suppose.
But the band will be able to handle megaphones, cause they're busy.
They'll overcome their trauma and slide.
The people will turn and watch them off behind or something, right?
Yeah. Right.
Like, yeah, you know, that would be, that would be, if you said, how we could just have the, like, Chisum baseball band sign, and then maybe plenty of you could just have them.
Yeah.
That would be people walking there or something.
Maybe we can, uh, talk to, uh, Mr. Malani. Maybe members of the football team coming down, or any cross coun- cross-country here, you know, athletics, drama.
Whoever, that's what I'm saying, if we can like try to, you know, organize something that, you know, cause we can't just say, okay, well, I think this, you know, without somebody actually organizing it.
It makes for a conversation too, if people don't, I mean, I know the referendum's gonna be happening, or if it has.
Other than having alumni swim meet, somebody can hand out information or.
Yeah.
Travis would be a good resource, I think.
I think so, yeah, oh, yeah, and he'd probably be right on topic, he's like into that, so. Um, what was that?
No, I forgot.
It left my head.
You can get a copy in your, um, folders of the literacy plan that we submitted to the Department of Ed. Thank you, Robbie Albert, she did a wonderful job on this. You can take a look at all the things we're working on here as well.
So how did you see they're giving the flyers out? You said that they're giving flyers.
They're getting printed now, that's all the updating I got. So the mailer is for the survey.
Right.
Flyers, I think they're gonna end up with us.
Like, we have to knock.
Probably. So, we'll, we'll see.
Oh, boy. I had volunteers from the staff said they would go door to door.
And that event is gonna help with some of the things in the halls.
Yeah.
Okay, but I think our next step is to get feedback from the survey.
Yeah, that's absolutely.
Okay. Anything else from the members? Do you have our enrollment numbers that if they used to look at?
Teen garden's been pretty good, huh? Already, they already, um, like, the dynamics.
Yeah. It's pretty, yeah, working out. Okay, hearing nothing else from members, I'm indicating a motion to adjourn. Motion by Cindy.
Support.
Or by Jackie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries is 537.
Do you guys wanna set up a?